Up to questions and comments. I'd like to do it by raising opinions so that we don't get a constant back and forth and hopefully spread out the information. I think the first one we want to do is IRS U22's request for bond money for field. And I guess I'll open it up to where we finished back.
Yeah, I'll introduce myself. For anybody that doesn't know me, I'm Heath Miller. I'm your board, one of your board members on the IRS U22 board. And I'll just introduce Regan. Regan is our new superintendent, assistant superintendent as of last spring. So I'll turn it over to her.
Well, thank you for having us. And to get started, I just wanted to give you a handout because last week we were at Hampden Academy and had a public hand. And this handout will just show you the slides that we discussed while we were there so that you can have the same information. It takes glasses or a microscope to read it, so I'll make sure I walk you through what it says so that you...
Do you have a microphone?
Yeah. One, two. Sure. Thank you.
Get some more in here.
Yeah. Come on. There. There. So I'm just going to speak from the poster because I think this tells the story well. We have turf at Hampden Academy and it was installed in 2003, so it's 14 years old. And we have first generation turf. So the very first product that was rolled out, RSU22 was fortunate enough to receive, but it only had a life expectancy of eight to 10 years. And we've been managing that field, I'd say, pretty well and have squeezed 14 years out of it. What's happening though is if any of you have ever been down walking on it, or if you have a student who has played on it, the students leave and they're covered with these rubber pellets. And it's because the infill from that turf is just coming up and we have fraying of the seams and of the fibers. And because of that deterioration, it has compacted. So the field is actually quite hard. And one of the advantages of turf when it's up to snuff is that you have great resiliency for the student athletes, so you have less of a safety risk with the field. But as you can see, we've got wear patterning going on here just from the use and from the weather over time. This is where you see the fraying at the seams and so where this turf is brought together. Back in the day, it wasn't necessarily sown in the same way that it is now. And so we'll see a different product upon replacing. We have sunken lines and the kids are reporting to us that as they're out there, the balls are hitting these sunken lines and they'll go erratically. So if you're playing softball, for instance, and the ball's coming at you, pretty good clip on the ground, it hits that seam, it pops up. We've had situation where kids are frustrated because it's veering off or worse hitting them. Also, it could be a trip hazard. Locally, Winkin Field at Hussin has just been replaced. And this is a comparison. We sent someone over just to take a picture and show what the difference would look like. But what the real difference is about is the field. You go on a field like this and compared to what we have right now, it's very soft. It absolutely is more supportive and a safer venue for the kids. So just to give you an idea of what level of use our fields get, RSU22, of course, is playing many, many games a year because we play four, you could argue, five sports because we have football on the turf, of course, but we have girls and boys soccer teams, field hockey, and then softball in the spring. We're also sharing our field because we have soccer clubs approaching us for use every year. Hampden Recreation works with us. We have the MPA asking to have regional estate competition there. So we're trying to generate some revenue by saying yes, come use our field. It's also convenient because there aren't many turf fields this far north. I want to get right to the point, though, that we've heard a lot of questioning about, and that is funding for the field. It is absolutely true that back in 2003, there probably wasn't a lot of discussion and foresight from the school district's part about being ready to replace it. And in 2009, that discussion started to happen because people knew its life was going to be coming due. And so a field reserve fund was implemented. So every year, we take 50% of all the gate receipts we get from the Hampden Academy Athletic Games and we put it away in that fund. And at the district budget meeting, you actually are voting on a warrant article that allows us to put that money away. That field fund has accumulated $110,000. So we're planning to use that money, if not in full, in part towards the project. Our athletic committee has been discussing this since 2012 in earnest, tried to look forward to what we're going to do next. And this year, we knew that it was the year we had to say to the communities, it's time for safety, to do something about the field. So when you have accumulated $110,000 in your field reserve fund in the turf project plus a lighting upgrade we'd like to do, which I'll talk about, is up to $900,000 plus. We recognize that we needed to do more. So we've really stepped out already to try to do four things to ensure that the next time around, the communities won't be asked for such a significant sum. We've started an athletic signage campaign. So if any of you have gone out to a basketball game at HA this winter, we've now given out the documentation so a business or someone who wants to be an athletic sponsor can pick a sponsorship level and put up an advertising sign and we'll generate that revenue back to our athletic complex improvements, this being one of them. And then we're also applying for three grants right now, all of which are substantial in their funding levels. Of course, it's never guaranteed you're going to get a grant, but we're working actively with three and hopefully going to bring home some money with that. And then we also recognize that we've noticed a lot of community comment that we should be capitalizing projects and saving up money toward them. And so we do have a capital reserve fund in our district right now that has about $360,000 in it. And that goes before voters at a district budget meeting also. And we intend to come to those meetings with foresight and explanation of why we'd be putting money away and how we would be using it in the future. It's really important to do. We are asking that part of this project, though it be a secondary part, be a lighting upgrade. And we've been asked why lighting, because when we go to the football games, we can see it, it's working out okay. But the bulbs on our lighting facility have been there since the original football field was in place. And those bulbs are being phased out. We're not going to be able to get them. So moving to an LED upgrade makes sense, will save money. It costs us $147 to light up a football game for three hours. If we move to the LEDs, it will cost us about $47 to light that same game. So we know the life of an LED right now, they're telling us 25 to 30 years. So we think the payback over time will occur because they'd be able to run for that many years of lifetime. What we're asking is that people come out and support RSU22 in the new field on February 6 at the referendum. And Heath and I are here tonight just to give you the basic information and then answer questions people have. Because we have had questions about why turf, not grass? Why is it that we need to do this now? If those questions are on your mind, I'd be happy to speak to you, but I know you have much else to discuss as well.
Any questions with our chair of opinions, please? Sir?
How's this going out to bid if it does get approved?
So we are working with a project manager out of Camden. Corgia Company is their name. And they have put together an RFQ. So we're going to go out for requests for qualifications first. We want to look at the scope of the ability of folks to do a replacement pretty efficiently and also understand what products they really are wanting to use. And then we'll go through the bidding with those companies that put in with qualifications that meet our needs.
You just said that you already picked out what you wanted to lay down. Why wouldn't we be picking out and telling them what you want?
And that's what the project manager will do, is his job to tell us, to tell the company what we want. And that's why we decided to hire that project manager is because, you know, we were looking into investigating and we're getting different things coming back from different companies and we wanted to compare the apples to apples. So when we did price it out, they're getting the same price no matter who we priced it out with. And possibly maybe a company that couldn't do the project that was way under. So if we have this project manager, he'll save us money in the end.
I have a question about the bond, I mean, not the bond, the grants.
Yes.
The amount that you're asking for, is that what your assumption is if you were not to get any grants?
Yes.
So that's kind of your top dollar, you're hoping to come underneath that with the additional grants?
Correct. And just to let you all know, we're going out to the main bond bank. And the reason for that is we do believe they have the best competitive rate right now for us. They only fund twice a year, so that's why we're coming to you in February because we want to be able to be funded for their May funding. But they're going to be flexible with us so that if our bids come in lower and we do have grant money, we can adjust the amount down. So we're very hopeful that this up to amount will allow us flexibility, but also come the other way if we can.
Anybody else?
Okay, well, thank you for the time. Bye.
All right. Now onto Newburgh's questions. The first question that's going to appear on the ballot is, shall an ordinance entitled "local food and communities," self-governance ordinance, the town of Newburgh be enacted? Now, this is a project that one of our citizens had put forth, Tracy Martin. And it primarily is a result of, I don't know if you remember the years ago, the controversy on selling raw milk from local farms or there was a market developed for this raw milk. And after a while, the state got involved and shut those down. Tracy is not here tonight to speak on it, but she has done a letter and I think, I think it went out in our mailing as well as, I think there's been some social media on it. So I guess we'll open it up to questions or comments. We'll answer them as best we can without Tracy being here.
I have a few things. So, no, now I took my school board hat off. I think I'm the only dairy farmer family left in the state, in the town of Newburgh. So not that I'm an expert on milk, but I probably am the most qualified person in the room to talk about milk. I've talked to quite a few people about this ordinance. In October, in late October, as some of you may know, the legislature had to reconvene and they had to take this up again because after the governor signed the bill, Secretary of Agriculture Sonny Perdue sent a letter to our ag commissioner, Walt Wickham, and said, if this goes through, we're going to take state control away from you as far as the meat and poultry goes, and the federal government's going to step in and do this because it's a federal law and supervises the state. So they reconvened, took that part out of this food sovereignty bill. And at that time, the Maine Dairy Industry Association was in there too. They got a few things in there. One of the things they got in there was that in order to sell raw milk without a license, the customer will have to come to the farm and have a face-to-face conversation or at least be at the farm by. And in this document that Tracy has in here, that's not, that's not at all, there's quite a few spots in here where that's not the case. I can go through, I mean, right in section two, there is the community social gatherings. So raw milk would not be allowed to be at a social gathering. So that would be something different than what's in here right now. So if we were to have a community supper here, somebody would not be able to bring raw milk to that supper because that's not a face-to-face interaction at the farm. There is a thing on, in section five, one, A and B. It states that the transactions are only between producer or processor and patron. That's like what I'm saying. This includes sales that are made directly to the patron, that's fine, occur on the farm where the farm, where the food product is originated, that's fine, at the home where the homemade food or drink is produced, that's fine. The next statement says at the home of the patron. That would mean that now I've just taken my raw milk and I've gone to this person's house to sell it, door to door. So that, as far as I'm concerned, should not be in here and doesn't align with the state statute. Or the next statement, at roadside stands. If the roadside stand's on your property, then it would be at your farm. But if that, it doesn't state that there, where's the roadside stand? It could be anywhere. That's some of the things that I worry about in here. But as a dairy producer, and the reason that we dairy producers, and I talk to the majority of us, worry about the sale of raw milk by unlicensed folks, is that less than 1% of all milk that's consumed is raw milk. 97% of all milk-related illnesses from milk or milk products is a derivative of drinking raw milk. So there is definitely a bigger risk to consuming raw milk. And so folks that are not permitted, the permit, and I have a copy of that with me, the permit is a one-page permit. It costs $25 to get this permit. All it requires is a person to have a piece of concrete no bigger than that table, a cow could stand on that table. With pressurized hot water in order to clean, so you wouldn't be able to boil hot water, you'd have to have, basically have a hot water tank. You have to have your cow tested for tuberculosis because that can be transferred by milk. And every cow that's milked and sold from a licensed farm is tested for tuberculosis and brucellosis. You know, we've come a long ways since 1864 when pasteurization was created. And maybe we've forgotten, this listeria, there's so many of these old diseases that we've, or sicknesses that we've forgotten that we even could get because we've come so far that I just, I just wish that this, because 90% of this ordinance is fine. If somebody wants to sell some products here or there, I'm fine with that. But I would really like to see us amend that to have, have anybody that wants to sell raw milk get that $25 permit. Along with that permit comes a dairy inspector that is more than happy to help somebody with a cow. They'll come, they would come, they'll answer the phone anytime you call. It's almost, it's like hiring consultant for $25. And I know, you know, we have inspectors come to our farm, Brian, you probably have health inspectors come there, and the day they're there, it's not something you want to deal with. But they're there to ensure that the whole industry is safe and that everybody, you know, is doing what they can to make sure that our citizens are healthy. And along with this bill, we can only sell this raw milk to people inside our town. So if we're selling this to somebody, I don't want to hurt my neighbor. I'd rather sell it to somebody out of town if I'm going to sell it to them. But, you know, and that brings up another point. How are we going to regulate? Somebody drives down Route 9, I'm selling raw milk side the road, and somebody from New Jersey stops by and they're driving through, going to see grandpa in the county and they says, well, you know, grandpa, he always drank raw milk. Let's stop and get some of that raw milk. Well, that's fine. But little Johnny in the backseat hasn't seen a germ in 15 years. And, you know, and then when they come back and they come back and they talk to this farmer that sold him the milk after little Johnny's got sick, hopefully he just got sick, and he's going to say, well, the town protects me with an ordinance. I don't know. I don't know if a good lawyer couldn't come back to the town and say, somebody's got to pay for little Johnny's medical bills. And I worry about that. But the biggest thing I worry about as a dairy producer is every time somebody gets sick drinking milk, the media gets a hold of it. They blame every guy that makes milk. They're not going to, the media, you know how the media works, they're not going to go out there and say, well, the perception won't be that, that, well, this was just an isolated incident and this guy wasn't doing it properly anyways. It hurts the whole industry. And that's why the dairy industry as a whole is pushing for permitted milk facilities. I guess that's about all I have to say.
Well, thank you. Again, Tracy's not here to, I guess, to add to that. It was my understanding that she took the wording of this from various towns that had already processed or had already done this type of legislation. And I believe it went through the legal review. But where we've got this question on our ballot, it's either going to be an up or down vote. And I would suggest that if it does pass, then we can work towards amending it to...
Right, that's what I was going to suggest.
To answer your concern.
Yeah.
Because what you say is very valid. I mean, personally, I'm very surprised that the state gave up their rights and obligation to inspect food.
Yeah.
I mean, we face inspections all the time and, you know, frankly, I welcome that because they do catch things and they do educate you on things that need to be done.
Did you say that they changed the raw milk part of it too, along with the meat?
Well, yeah, some of it. There was some provisions there in the October meeting.
Okay.
And I think the biggest thing they changed was the has to be sold on farm, in person, only in town.
Right.
But I don't know how we regulate that only in town. Are we going to, I mean, ID people? I mean...
So just to let you know, if there is something in state law that something in here conflicts with, state law supervises this.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. But town ordinance, we could go above and beyond.
We can make it more...
Make it more, but not...
More restrictive.
More enforcement.
But we have to at least meet state minimums. So if there's something here that, like you said, if they've implemented, issued something at the state law regulating the raw milk part of it, and this doesn't at least meet that, then this would not be valid, that part of it would not be valid.
But we may want to amend it so it does reflect state law because if somebody were to come in and get that ordinance from the town, we'd want to make it, you know, if they read it and they said, well, I'm following town ordinance, if it doesn't follow state, we may want to amend it afterwards so that it does follow state. So when you hand it to somebody, at least explain state.
Yes.
If there's a problem with the way the ordinance is written, why can't you amend it before we go to...
You can't. Not with a referendum. It's, this is the way it was put forth to the people. That's the question. The ballot can be changed and we can't change this. This is what's been advertised to the people. That's what they're voting on.
But something's wrong, why wouldn't you make it right?
I think you can't amend it. Can't amend it. I think she's right on that.
If we were at an open town meeting, we probably could, but we're doing it by a referendum ballot, so it's either a yes or no question. We can't amend anything.
And if it does pass, I would envision that we could have a workshop, make the amendments and have it available for the town meeting, which would be in just a few months.
Right. I don't think it matters if it passes or it doesn't, as long as everybody's open to amending it. So if it passes, we amend it, or it doesn't pass, we amend it, vote on it again.
Right.
Either way, we amend it naturally.
People need to know that there's an amendment.
That's the thing. Get the word out.
Get it out so that people know that there's an amendment that needs to be made upon passing.
At least put it on the agenda.
Right.
So that people understand that part of it.
Yep.
Next question is, shall an ordinance entitled prohibiting retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs in the municipality of Newburgh be enacted? And this is an ordinance that we wanted to try to get ahead of the curve with the ever-changing state laws with respect to recreational marijuana. A number of weeks ago, the board was approached by an individual who had a real strong interest in coming to Newburgh, purchasing farmland with the hope of growing marijuana for a wholesale purpose. They had no interest in retail sales. Their interest was developing the product and using some of its byproducts additionally and so forth. But that got the board thinking that perhaps it's time to address the situation while the state is still somewhat in limbo. And number one, perhaps encouraging wholesale or manufacturing of cannabis product. And number two, restricting and prohibiting the retail sale of marijuana. The board really felt that it really wasn't in Newburgh's best interest to promote retail sales or social clubs or that sort of thing for the service. Pretty much bans, bans the social aspect, but allowing the potential for growing the The state is still in the process of working on this legislation. In my mind, it's kind of a moving target. They haven't finalized everything yet and it may be by the time they make their decisions that we'll have to redo this one as well as the first question. But I guess I'll open it up to questions, comments.
So why are we jumping the gun so quick if the state hasn't done nothing yet?
Because if we don't act, there'll be a period of time where everything can be grandfathered, where we can have people come into town and start this process. And if we have no regulations in place, we can't stop them. Therefore, they'd be grandfathered.
Are there any towns putting moratoriums on this until the state figures that out?
There's quite a few.
Instead of passing a bunch of rules?
There's quite a few towns that have put moratoriums on it. In fact, from my research, it's kind of rare to find those who are allowing at least the retail sale portion of it.
Would that be in the best interest of the town instead of coming up with a bunch of guidelines and rules that could possibly change just to pull a hold on it until the state can figure out what they're doing? That way you can not worry about the grandfathering.
Well, that's true. And the board was heading in that direction, but really were enticed by the presentation that this individual made that, you know, rural Newburgh, you look around and there's all kinds of empty growing fields, you know, so much potential for agriculture. While in my personal opinion, this isn't the most favorable agricultural product I'd like to see here, but, you know, it's, it may be something in the future and Newburgh has a lot to offer. So we wanted to at least have that opportunity to allow somebody to come in and build some sort of manufacturing facility.
Does the town have a list of any current producers for medical marijuana that is currently licensed through the state? Do we know of any grow operations in the town?
No.
I believe there's one, possibly two, based on phone calls I've received, but they don't have to list with us. So just to give you an idea, I put out a question, posed a question to town managers today on a listserv. And based on the answers that I got back, I just wanted to see how many had implemented something like this. And out of the ones that got back to me, 17 towns have enacted an ordinance. Majority of them took the same ordinance we did, the one recommended by MMA and just critiqued it to Newburgh. And three have theirs all done and waiting to act on them. And two were just... And two were just getting started with the same thing, the MMA, just to get something in place because the moratorium for the state ends in February. And there's gonna be a timeframe from when that ends till they can get another one enacted or if they don't have their stuff together, there's gonna be an open spot where they can move in and nobody's covered. And if they get something established, then they would be grandfathered. One of the things the lady said to us when we made, when she made the presentation to us was that part of the wording in the legislature is in order for these people to do any of these things, they were gonna have to have a state license, and the license wouldn't be issued unless they had endorsement from the town. And this was based on the conversation the board had. Out of the, you know, five different licenses, and one of them, I can't remember what it was, but two were, these two limited, you know, the retail stores and retail social clubs, the board didn't feel that that's something they wanted to see come to Newburgh. So that's why they put that in there.
But didn't you, did you just say in his answer back there that you did some looking and telephone calls? And there's two people that are already growing? Is that what you said?
No, I said, I believe there's one, possibly two, for the medical marijuana, which they don't have to have anything here. It's a totally different scenario with the state of medical marijuana. No, they grow for medical purposes. They sell for medical purposes.
This is the recreational...
Recreational growing.
Growing, as they call it right now. Yes, two different. Just, there's already a grow operation, at least one, possibly two, already in the town that is licensed for medical marijuana.
Medical-based.
By the state.
Through the state, yes. What we're talking about is recreational growth, so, and sales.
So, the growing aspect then is this ordinance that you'll look at later, that's what I'm getting at. This doesn't have anything to do with the recreational growth at all?
This is just eliminating those two.
Growing for the wholesale part of it, yes, it does.
This does it?
Yes.
So this would allow it?
Yes.
Yes.
Allow the growth, but not...
Not the retail sales.
And the wholesale sale, but not retail or social.
It wouldn't limit your ability to grow six plants up behind the garage.
Everybody.
But it wouldn't limit you planting five acres out back.
Or in this case, three large.
As a melon.
Right, right.
You'd have to find a place to sell it. Wholesale, yes. And that's basically what this says, is that you can wholesale it out of this town. But you can't put any shops or social clubs or any of that.
Dice arts can't adapt to that.
Right.
This is the board trying to be, Renee said, proactive versus reactive. So...
Paul Seck? All right. Next question is, are you in favor of signing a withdrawal agreement with municipal review committee? Cindy will address that as it relates to our...
Okay, so, two years ago, we voted to stay with Perk for our trash. For the last twenty years with Perk, there's been a company, MRC, that has overseen our interest in Perk. While voting the way the town did, there, what we did is voted to stay with Perk, but we actually are not in need of the services of MRC anymore. MRC holds a big, good, like ninety thousand dollars of money that belongs to the town. And they have requested that the town sign this withdrawal agreement with them so that they'll release our funds.
And where's this money going?
The town voted in June that it's gonna go into a reserve fund, which is already set up because we've already got a portion of it. And it's gonna sit in case we need that money to pay for extra funds for trash. But there was...
So it's gonna stay in the trashy?
In that, we have a separate trash account where that money's gonna be put.
And we're staying with Perk.
And we are staying with Perk, yes.
So who oversees the interest at the point that MRC no longer oversees it for us?
We don't have any interest in Perk. That's the thing, is we don't have any anymore. We're just sending our trash there and paying a tip.
All right, so there's no...
We're getting nothing back from them.
Back from them, okay.
Paul Seck? And our last question, shall the town appropriate sixty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars from fund balance to purchase and equip a replacement rescue vehicle? And we've got Chris Fox here and he'll...
All right, so does everybody have a packet? Mr. Ward, do you have a packet?
Nope.
No, all right. All right, so, just a brief introduction of who I am. Most of everybody who knows, but my name is Chris Fox. I'm the rescue chief for Newburgh Fire Rescue. I'm coming forth tonight to talk about my request on behalf of the department to replace our current rescue vehicle, which is a nineteen ninety-seven Ford E-350 diesel ambulance. It's currently out of service for at least the second time this year for an extended period of time. It went in for inspection in December and failed the commercial inspection again for the second year in a row. Previous to that, it was out of service for many weeks because the seatbelt mechanism failed. So it's certainly unsafe for anybody to be going down the road, especially in an emergency vehicle without working seatbelts. This vehicle was so old that they had to go across the Pacific Ocean to find seatbelts for it, getting them from Korea. And within four weeks of them being installed, they broke again. So we were running the vehicle with broken seatbelts very carefully. Some people weren't real comfortable doing that. I certainly wasn't. I would sort of just work with what we needed to do. And then in December, it came due for its commercial inspection. It failed. It has over twenty-six hundred dollars worth of work that needs to be done to it once again this year. Last year was pretty much the exact same cost. Project started as far as what we were going to do with this vehicle about fifteen months ago. So in October, I came to the board of selectmen, told them, you know, the vehicle's unsafe. This is what I've got going on with the vehicle. We had three options presented at that point, fixing the vehicle, buying a brand-new vehicle, or finding something used. Well, the fourth option was, well, those were the three options. And, you know, at that time, the new vehicle was presented to be a rescue, a full, fully equipped rescue vehicle, you know, anywhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars, brand-new. We brought used vehicles forward to be examined, you know, reviewed and thought of that were just at used vehicles. And then the third option was fixing this vehicle. We had, the timeframe didn't allow for any sort of referendum to occur, to discuss and go forth with this back then. So the option chose at that time was to put the work into the vehicle. They fixed the vehicle as best they could for the age of the vehicle and for the wear and tear that was on it. And it got us through until December, when it was actually looked at and inspected. And they once again failed it. So I came and brought this back to the board of selectmen. We took the vehicle out of service because it was not safe. It was towed back to the fire station and that's where it's been since. So I brought it to the board of selectmen and we sort of came to the same idea that we did in October of the year before, was, you know, we don't wanna keep putting good money, good, hard-earned taxpayer money, taxpayer's hard-earned money rather, into something that was not sustainable for any long-term period of time. So that's when we really got moving forward on looking at replacing the vehicle. So I reached out to three different vendors, each on lighting, on the vehicle itself, things that would go in the vehicle. And this is a package that I bring to you today, what I was able to get for the best price. So we'll just go through the pages and then you guys ask the questions if you have. So the second page is a picture of our current ambulance with the mileage and just, you know, just a little explanation of what's going on with it. I have a letter there on the third page from Autotronics, which is basically the ambulance dealer for this area in northern Maine. I talked to them, I told them what the problems were with the vehicle that came back to me from the inspection. I talked about the year, the mileage. I estimated the mileage a little bit high by four thousand miles when I spoke to them, but that really wouldn't affect it that much as far as how they valued the vehicle. And he was being generous when he said he would give us a thousand dollars for the vehicle if he were to value it. That's how he explained it to me on the phone. Obviously, it's an emergency vehicle, so we need it to work when we need it to work. So flipping through further, the vehicle that we're requesting, I'm requesting is a two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe four-motor. It's gonna be a four-wheel-drive vehicle. That's something that we didn't have in our ambulance. We recently went into a call that was in a snowstorm and an ambulance actually got stuck on the call. Brent was there with Chief Wiltbank and they were able to get the ambulance unstuck. But if we were to have this vehicle, Brent had to use his own vehicle. But if we were to have this vehicle, we would have been able to use this vehicle with four-wheel drive and things like that. So, you know, flipping through a little bit further...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did you reach out to the state?
The state?
For their bid sheet for vehicles? Do you know that the state has this?
This vehicle?
Well, they have a Ford Expedition.
No, I did not.
Okay. I work for the University of Maine system. I work for Strategic Procurement and I buy vehicles for the system. I buy a lot of vehicles and we buy a lot of them off the state. I'm pretty sure if we're able to get those pricing, I'm pretty sure you can get those pricing. And a lot of those have these police packages that you can back out and adjust and get different lighting and so forth. I'm not saying this isn't a bad proposal.
Sure.
The pricing is very good. I've worked with Jessica, that's really good pricing. But for example, you can get a Ford Expedition off the state price, which is a similar size, without a skid plate for thirty-three thousand dollars. With skid plate and additional lighting, it's thirty-six thousand dollars. So it's a few thousand dollars off that. I just...
I appreciate that information. That's certainly something I will look at.
I can get you that information.
Yeah, please do, please do. I appreciate that. Yeah.
And that's through Quirk, that contract?
Yeah, I did reach out.
But he probably didn't, he's on... Dealerships are only gonna give you that pricing if you ask for it.
Right. It's a buyer...
It's a state-contracted pricing. They go out to bid and they put out a lot of vehicles, they say approximately, you have to buy it. And just like this one, I'm assuming they told you it's gonna be eight to ten, eight to twelve weeks from delivery, from order to delivery? Because they bill them, they bill them specifically to what you order them. That's how Jessica's able to give you the discounts because she's able to back up a lot of those packages. Quirk does the same way as well because that's who the contract is. Darlings has contracts for certain vehicles as well. You can certainly go and work with them. And like I said, I know the guy very well because I work with him at Quirk. And he can basically bill you that package for the, we buy police vehicles for the university off the state contract. There's a lot of different options. I don't know if you're sold on...
No.
A full-size SUV like that because you do have other options. If you can buy off the state contract, which I don't see why you can't because you are municipality, you have some additional options. I just, you know, I think that's something you should explore.
Certainly.
Just make sure you have some additional. Other than that, I don't wanna derail, sorry to derail you on that one.
No, not at all. I appreciate, I appreciate, that's why we're having this meeting.
Yeah, because you have a lot of options here.
Yeah, and I know your name, so I'm gonna reach out to you definitely. And this figure that I'm throwing, that I've presented, obviously, we don't have to meet that figure. We can make it less, that makes everybody happy. But that's the figure to get what we need. And if it can be less, that'd be great. And I'm certainly going to explore that. But for the purpose of this presentation, what I have right in front of me, so we'll just continue if everybody's okay with that. So, yeah, the price that they were able to get, this vehicle's a fifty-one thousand dollar vehicle. They're gonna be able to provide it for thirty-nine thousand. It's certainly not as good as what Mr. Ward just shared about an Expedition that he'd be able to get, but we'll certainly look at that. Possibly, right. So...
So, you may advertise on TV. The other options, you may wanna look at that as well as the cabin crew. He's already got quoted for this particular vehicle. May differ from the other as well.
And you'll still probably need to do some of that from these companies. You got different bidding, especially a cabin crew and so forth. The good thing about that, the state contract is, you don't need to take it as is. You can back it down to the base model and then go to these secondary companies and then have them outfitted the way you want it to. Or you could ask them to outfit it.
Right. So, yeah, like this vehicle that we're, that I have quoted here, that I'm presenting, is built to be a public safety vehicle. So it has the heavier-duty equipment, you know, the gut wiring harnesses already set in for some of the things, which will save money on the backside for installation. So I'm just, you know, for full transparency, which I presented this packet to give you the cost of each element of the vehicle. So we're putting a very modest graphics package on the vehicle to provide enough reflectivity and safety to meet the current standards. So that was gonna be eight hundred eighty-five dollars. One of the things that's going to be, hopefully, if the city's gonna approve the project, we're gonna have new radios put into the system, into this vehicle. The county is working on upgrading the radio system. So there's a potential that it's going to be moved from a just straight duplex VHF system to a DMR system. We'll figure out what that is. And you don't really need to know what it is, other than it's different than what we have now. So we're going to need new radios. And part of this system that I built out is going to allow our, allow the vehicle to act as a repeater. So when we're, when we're in the field, in your house, on the side of the road and we need to contact dispatch, we sometimes have challenges in certain parts of the community based on geography, reaching out from our portable radios. This, which would be a radio that sits on my hip, okay? This vehicle will allow for me to talk into my radio on my hip, to the car, and push that signal out to dispatch. And it would be able to do the same thing for our local communications as well, which is really a crew safety standard and really something that's lacking right now, which, you know, potentially puts our crew in danger. So we've got that going on. And then we're able to put a modest lighting package into the vehicle while still maintaining the safety standards that need to occur for our crews to be safe while working, especially in environments such as the interstate where vehicles go very fast and don't like to slow down. And, you know, people, the crews are working outside of their vehicle on the side of the road. So the warning and lighting is important that it's done. So, you, the warning and lighting is important, that it's done the right way, you know, provide the maximum forward warning for people to slow down to get by. And then the thing that Lieutenant Ross was talking about, the custom cabinet, it's gonna be a cabinet that's gonna hold our equipment in the back of the vehicle, but it's, we have quite a bit of equipment. It's gonna hold most of the equipment we have now. It's not gonna hold everything we currently have. A lot, a good amount of the equipment on the truck is not a day-to-day use, so we don't necessarily need to carry it all the time. So, that will reduce the cost of, you know, fuel going to and from calls with that extra weight not being in the vehicle. Part of that cabinet for the back is going to include a command board, so when we're at an incident and we need to have a space to work, you know, we've done our EMS aspect of it, now we need a space to control and work out of, whether that be the fire chief or myself or a combination of the both, we're gonna have that in the back of the vehicle. It's gonna have radios in the back so we can communicate with people on the ground as well as our communications center. And so, the costs, there's a cost summary, because that's really what everybody cares about, or, you know, the most important aspect of it is the total cost, which hopefully will be less if Mr. Ward gets me set up, gets the town set up, will be $62,436.61. So, the reason the amount requested is $64,924 or $2,500 basically more is because a lot of these calls were received before the new year, and when I'm speaking, in speaking to vendors, there can be a 3% to 5% increase at the beginning of a new year from a price quote, say in October, to when this would actually occur in February. So, I didn't want to get to the project and get to a point where these prices have gone up and now we don't have enough money. So, that's what, that's what that, that 4% is. I do just want to acknowledge that in the documentation that I put on our Facebook page as well as the letter that I sent through the town, the figure was $65,000. That was a clerical error on my part. Before I open the floor to questions, or the chairman opens the floor to questions, I did receive a, an email from a citizen who couldn't be here tonight with questions, and they were really good questions, so I would just like to read that email and then read my response to her, and then we'll open it up. So, the resident said, "Good evening, thank you for sharing the information regarding the upcoming request. I'm hoping that you might be able to educate me on a few things you've mentioned." So, this was in response to the newsletter that I sent out, or that the town sent out that I wrote, I blur before. So, currently, the rescue division runs a 1997 Ford ambulance-style vehicle. The vehicle was acquired in 2014 in used condition. She asked, "Can you explain the job skills of the rescue division and the vehicle requirements?" She says, "How often does or did the old rescue vehicle respond every call?" She's asking. She said she understands the desire for a new vehicle to meet safety requirements, reduce maintenance costs, and to have warranty. Makes sense. She wants to know, "Are there any other specific requirements for this vehicle to allow emergency responders to do their job? You mentioned certain scenes that are unsafe for riders to respond in non-emergency vehicles like the interstate. Are there other examples or locations that would require the vehicle that you're requesting?" How often or how many calls do you have for these types of calls? Any other information I could add about the difference between ambulance style versus a rescue vehicle that would explain the vehicle requirements and cost? And are there any other options or types of vehicle with less cost that would some, be somewhere in the middle between buying used and the current one being out of service? So, my response to the citizen was, so the rescue, just explaining what it is, the rescue division is the EMS wing of the Newburgh Fire Rescue Department. Primarily, we respond, we provide first responders EMS services until the transporting ambulance arrives, which can take up to 30 minutes in good weather. Just an aside here for people who don't know, we don't have an ambulance that transports here in Newburgh. The ambulance has to come from Bangor, Capital Ambulance. So, that's, you know, that's the extended timeframe. Being in emergency service, we carry specialized equipment to assist people when they need our services. This includes drugs such as epinephrine, naloxone, glucose, which require a temperate environment, which means it cannot be allowed to freeze or get too warm. Additionally, we carry suction to clear airways to allow patients to breathe or allow us to ventilate a patient who is not breathing on his or her phone, clear the airway tube to ventilate the patient. That device requires power to be kept charged, so when we need it, it's ready to go. So, in addition to that, we carry mobilization equipment, which is used when someone's suspected of having a spinal injury or at risk for having one. That's just a sampling of the equipment that we carry and that this new vehicle would still be able to carry. That's also equipment that we can't all carry in our vehicles. I can't carry a backboard in my car. Kelly can't be expected to carry naloxone in her car or a suction equipment. So, the rescue vehicle, generally speaking, would respond to every call that had a crew able to respond. The old vehicle does not respond as often because some did not feel safe or comfortable driving the vehicle because of its size, which was daunting to a lot of people, which is daunting to a lot of people, you know, moving, if you're not used to driving large vehicles, that you can't see up the back window when you need a backup. The new vehicle proposed is an SUV. So, the vehicle has to be a certain size to carry the necessary day-to-day equipment for the responders to do their work as effectively and efficiently as possible. Addressing these types of scenes, other than the interstate, that would not necessarily be ideal, or potentially unsafe personnel to bring their own vehicle to the response would be any roadside response. So, any car accident or, you know, we've responded to people needing CPR, and they're in the middle of the road, you know. So, we don't want people's cars all lined up in the road unsafely, if at all avoidable. Calls in remote areas that non-four-wheel-drive vehicles cannot safely pass, especially if there's a snowstorm or the like. As far as how often we have scenes like that, probably 50% or so, if not more. And one of the challenges with public safety in general is we don't necessarily always know we're gonna be going to a scene like that because emergencies are dynamic, so they change as they go on. So, the main difference between the ambulance-style vehicle that we have now and the rescue-style vehicle is the purpose. The ambulance is built to transport people, allowing enough room for the patient and two or three providers in the back of the truck to work on it, to work and help the patient. A rescue vehicle, which is what we are, a rescue department, does not transport people, so we don't have that need for that space. So, the rescue vehicle is to transport personnel and equipment, not patients. So, I sort of already explained this part of it. So, the main reason that we looked at new versus used was for the financial interests of the town, long-term. Obviously, with any vehicle, it's gonna be maintenance, but we paid a lot of money into this vehicle that is very aged. It's 19, you know, it's 21 years old. So, buying new vehicle that probably have, will have a warranty and just won't have somebody else's, face somebody else's problem passed on to us, will hopefully save the taxpayer future cost because they're not coming with problems already. So, that was my response to her question. Maybe that answers some of your questions, maybe not, and go ahead and take more. If Gerald...
Yeah, by all means, thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris?
Is it gonna have a space in the back to get somebody into to keep them warm if there was, have to be an accident roll over or some sort?
So, it's not going to have a space where a person can be supined, so not on their back, but the vehicle will have, it's going to have the one-third, you know, the two-thirds, one-third parts of seats, two-thirds of it will be available. The box is currently designed that a third of the seat, the seating in the back will be taken up by the box that will be protruding from the rear of the vehicle.
So, the third row's holding down, then?
There's no third row in the vehicle.
But...
But yes.
For comparison.
Correct. Third row, it's gonna be completely covered, the third row, it's gonna be covered and the right side of the vehicle, passenger side of the vehicle, where the one-third seat is will be covered. Or it might be the two-third, I believe it's the one-third though, but yes. There will be still space in the back as well as the front compartment.
The new versus used, used vehicles, four-wheel-drive in the state of Maine are very popular vehicles, as you all know. Resale value on those are very high. You're never gonna get a new vehicle for the same price. You're almost gonna pay full market value for anything that's new-used versus just new. State of Maine, I work with them quite extensively, any of their studies show that a vehicle that gets over five years old and has 100,000 miles, your maintenance every year will go up approximately 40%. That's on average. So, you're less looking at that heat detention warranties, you're looking at a three-year warranty, usually five-year on your full bumper, on your powertrain systems and so forth. So, while the initial price is high, the life of the vehicle will bring it down, especially if you can get some additional options through the state possibly. I do, we've been working on this a lot and it costs a lot of money. Yes, it's a lot of money upfront, but we've done a lot of studies within the system, through the university system, and it, it actually saves us money to buy new.
And we're not putting mileage on it like you are putting your car on the road. We're not doing 20, 30, 50 miles a year, so that in itself will extend its life somewhat.
And I even encourage the fire department to build a replacement plan, and that in seven years, you replace this vehicle. You buy it low, you sell it high. Granted, it'll spec out, but you'll have a vehicle that has low mileage, and if you can buy it even at the $39,000 price in seven years, you're gonna be able to trade it in for $20,000 towards your next vehicle, and that just keeps your maintenance cost down. And if you can build that into your budget, it, budgets are always hard to build, but if you can plan that out and get over this initial hump, this initial investment, in seven years, you'll see that turnaround. One of the reasons I say seven years, if you were to sell this outright to, or trade it in, it'd be more valuable to a dealership because banks are still willing to give out personal, a bank, a vehicle loan at a lower interest rate. Once a vehicle hits eight years old and older, they'll only give out a personal loan. It cuts down the people that will buy, that are able to buy your vehicle, therefore it's not as worth as much to you, to the dealerships.
I appreciate that, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I promised I'd ask the question, how much is in the fund balance?
So, the fund balance, at the end of the fiscal year 2017 was $887,000, um, yes, $150.42. Article 26 allotted a renewal of $142,000. So, the current balance of the unassigned fund is $745,150.42.
So, if anybody was wondering how much money we were, how much we would have left from the expense for this, I didn't know if anybody would ask the question, so I made sure we were ready to answer it, so I asked him.
Yes, this is...
This is not by tax.
Right.
We're gonna take this out of the fund balance.
This purchase will not result in any new taxes because the town already has this money, it's just allocating it to this vehicle.
And that was the whole reason that we were building up the fund balances for these unexpected costs when they arise, and they are going to arise, that we'd have the money to come forth and ask people to give their blessing.
One thing I don't see on there that I'd like to have you look into as well, 90% of the new vehicles have reverse cameras in them anyway, but they do offer aftermarket version, a lot of UPS and FedEx trucks have them, a little larger size. If you buy the, an expensive vehicle, that may not be in that.
They're standard now, the 18R's.
Oh, we gotta rent a truck and it don't.
Is it a Chevy or GMC?
GMC.
GMC, it's supposed to be standard in all the trucks.
It don't.
18?
No, it's not an 18.
18's a standard, they're coming out standard in 18s.
But anyways, I'm just... Yeah, I'm pretty sure it does, but we're not sure that we account for that.
Yeah. I mean, that's one of the situations that you were explaining, people didn't wanna back it up because they couldn't see a Yukon with stuff all in it, it's gonna be just as difficult to see through with the tinted windows.
Yeah.
That's gonna make a big difference to see somebody walking behind you.
Was that mentioned, this fund balance business, was that mentioned in the newsletter that the money was gonna be coming out of the fund balance?
Yes. So, tell all your friends if they misunderstood what it was, tell them all, it's not gonna result in any new taxes.
It's just allowing you to allocate the money.
It's just moving it from one thing to another. Yes, sir?
Another question I had, when you was talking about if you get to a roadside situation and the person you're getting out of the vehicle in climate weather, what are you gonna do? Leave them on the ground? You have no way to cover them up?
No, well, we do. We, we do have, we would improvise a situation where we, you know, cover them or, you know, use blankets or towels.
You, what I'm getting at is you don't have anything to cover them with to keep the inclement weather, like tonight, tonight. A blanket ain't gonna help five minutes down the road.
Right.
And you're, you're 15 to 20 minutes to get an ambulance out of you.
But you're talking about people that are, you have to mobilize, correct?
Well, what I was talking about for the roadside, yes. And, but what I'm talking about for the example that I provided where we've actually, you know, we've had to do CPR, a person being on the ground who's not breathing and unconscious, them being exposed to the elements is not as big of a concern as being able to do a good CPR.
I don't have a problem with putting them on a backboard.
Right. Which vehicle will be able to carry?
Huh?
Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
What you're gonna have in the vehicle.
Correct.
But why hasn't the town got a small portable tent to put over the person?
We do have tents.
That's all.
I was waiting for you two to get done.
I hate the thoughts of being out there at night laying on the ground and the rain coming down, getting soaked.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, yes, that's a very valid concern. It wouldn't be a normal operation where we would take a person out of the car until the, until the ambulance got there unless there was a situation that were serious, and that wouldn't be, his exposure to the elements wouldn't be a major concern.
Can you currently put somebody on a backboard and put them in the rescue vehicle now?
Yes. We can't go anywhere.
Can't go anywhere, but you...
And I think it's important to note too that you, I believe you've run into circumstances where people seeing the rescue vehicle that we have now thinking it's an ambulance and they don't understand why they can't be trained for it.
Yes.
Right.
We want a safe early vehicle that's multiple transport.
We, yes, and it's caused a couple different scenes of people to get very agitated, which creates another problem that I now have to manage this person as well as dealing with his or her friend who needs my assistance or family member.
Where will this vehicle be stored?
It will be stored at the fire station on West Hamlet.
In Newburgh?
Yes.
Won't be used for a personal vehicle around the Bangor or...
It's not gonna be used in a personal capacity, but it may need to go to Bangor to get equipment and supplies, but it's not gonna be, I'm not gonna be driving around, just hanging out in Bangor if that's what your concern is.
If you go to a call and you need to pull out certain product out of it, whether it's breathing or needle or whatever it might be they're using, sometimes you may need to go to Capital and get replacement parts.
Okay, anybody else?
On the radio side bit, you mentioned a repeater and the radio for the unit itself, and then you mentioned the commands, and is that gonna be also radios in the back that's usable for...
Yes, so, yeah, we're gonna have two radios in the front, so one for communicating with dispatch all the time, and then one on ours, so we don't have to do this thing. So, for guys who don't know, these guys are on the fire department, on the fire division. So, you know, we're switching constantly, switching back and forth. This won't need that. And then in the back, two more radios, separate radios, so we're again...
Here, no.
Nope, this is gonna be built, this is gonna be built, built in. I'm looking at as well, not, not part of this, but there'll be radios in the vehicle as well.
Easy to explain the amount when you know that.
Yeah, so, yeah, four total radio plus... Yeah, so, yeah, four total radios plus a fifth one to create the portable extension.
And this will have a built-in repeater that'll run, operate all four radios on a repeater process, or one radio will...
What, how it works is, if this, there'll be a one radio dedicated to be the repeater. And whatever the radio, um, inside the vehicle set to, my radio's gonna push out to the radio in the car.
And use that as a repeater.
Yes. So, cause a, a radio on my hip transmits five watts of power. That's not a lot.
Yep.
Whereas a vehicle radio can transmit forty-five watts of power.
Will it communicate to all the radios that we have in that same station or, like, the ones that we have on that carmine as well? Or is it just for the ones in that unit?
No, it will be, we'll, there'll be reprogram required, reprogramming required.
Right.
But yes, they should all be able to work.
So what's these two radios in the back you're talking about?
The two?
What are they for?
If we're in a situation, so we, for example, the situation that was out on the interstate, right? We had a many-vehicle crash. It doesn't necessarily mean there'd be that many, but we have somebody who takes command. When there's an incident, there needs to be somebody in charge. And when you're coordinating a lot of things, you need to be able to communicate with units that are coming to you, as well as units that are on the scene.
So you can break it off into different channels.
Right. And you need to be able to communicate with dispatch as well.
Right. It keeps them at a safe position on the vehicle at all times, so you're not running around the front, getting in, making your call, getting back out, running back to see what's going on. It keeps everybody stationary to a certain location.
So it's not a portable radio?
No, sir.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a mobile speaker.
Right.
Stationary. And how many more portables you gotta buy?
Well, you, I don't have to buy any for, that I'm aware of, for the system. But the radios that we have currently, some of them are breaking down, so just as part of regular replacement. There'll be some vehi- in the vehicle, because that's a, that's a, that's an issue as well, because sometimes when we have firefighters, um, or EMS providers respond to calls. They don't necessarily have their equipment because they're coming from their, you know, the grocery store. So we'll be able to provide a radio so they can communicate and be safe, safer with it, being able to, uh, communicate. All right. Thanks, Chris. And that does it for our public meeting. We've covered all four questions. And again, voting is February sixth. It's Monday.
Very good questions, too, Doug.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for your interest.
No, making fun of Chris is a slight slope.
No, it's good enough for me. I tried after that.